No, okay.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. Very good. All right, PTO update. Uh, Dr. Stella, you're on already. We're moving right along here. It's like lightning tonight.
If I seem out of breath is because I ran back, or actually I drove back from all day conference today, who's the annual CICA conference, and that's the Connecticut Educators Computer Association. And we have two feathers in our cap here at Beecher Road School. Rick Wood is a major organizer of this conference, that's a regional conference, brings in hundreds of educators from throughout Connecticut and other neighboring New England states. And secondly, we had a team presenting at two workshops, a team of six people. They were presenting on the iPad, but also the philosophy of our, and vision of our technology movement, how it ties into our education here, the back, 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 back support that's needed for it. So there was standing room only for two of the workshops, we're very, very pleased with that. And again, congratulations to Rick Wood, Stephanie Elick, who was involved with the sixth grade pilot, Michelle Shepard, who was involved with the second grade pilot, James Crawford, Laurie Patrick, and Larry Hurwitz. So they did a great job, we're very proud of them. And it's, it was good to see, these kinds of conventions gives a, provides us with an opportunity to network, really get a feel from what's happening in other districts and so on. You know, we have to thank our Board of Education and the town boards for the support they've given technology, because relatively speaking, I think we're, we're very well postured for what lies ahead. And one of the big things that lies ahead is the S-Back Assessment, the new design, that will be taking place sometime during the last 12 weeks of the year. We don't know the time, we will find out, districts will do it at different times. And so listening to our colleagues, we, even though sometimes we don't think we have enough, we're, we're better postured with the type of equipment that we have, and the support that we receive from the board, especially for the mobile computers. I feel good about that, because it's going to help our children to be more relaxed in taking the test, just going to allow for more flexibility on our part. So it was a good day. What I'd like to mention is the boiler update. The Boards of Selectment and Finance voted unanimously last week to accept the recommendation of the memo from the Board of Education, and to accelerate the process as far as acquiring new boilers. An information meeting has been set for Tuesday, that's required by charter, November 5th, at 6:00 PM in the Center School Gym. And we anticipate that the Board of Finance will give final approval for the funding on that project. I spoke to Doug Tischbaum, who's the project director from the company that's going to be working with us, and he's, I just spoke to him about an hour ago, and they're just waiting to go into action with that. So we appreciate the support of the Board of Education on this too. The building upgrade, the Boards of Selectment and Finance have scheduled a town informational meeting, at which the town building committee will present the proposed building project for Beecher Road School. The date is set for Wednesday, November 20th, at 6:00 PM in the Center School Gym. And I think it's important that we have good representation there for this information meeting. The Town Building Committee, Margaret and I have been collaborating with Merem El Ramahi, the Director of Marketing and Communication at ESG Systems Group, in developing an information story about the upgrade, the rationale, the need for it. So there'll be a team at the school this week, working with us, to put a communication piece together. With, you'll be asked to vote on tonight a motion to approve some minor changes in the educators' evaluation plan that you had approved in May. And that's due to the fact that, again, we were given the option as a district to, to do away with the CMT, that itself would do away with it, to go into the S-Back, and the Board approved that, so now it has to, we have to show that in our plan, so we'll have a motion for that. But I'll ask Mrs. Prisco to give us an update on the, on the education evaluation system, how it's going at the school, and then an upgrade, update on the school too.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to do an update on the school, if I could first. As you know, I always try to give you a picture of what is happening in the classrooms. But before I start, I need to say a thank you to the Woodbridge Fire Department. What a terrific visit that we had with our younger children. Everybody got to go on the truck, I think they might even ring the bell. So it was excellent. So we do appreciate that. I also want to congratulate our teachers that presented at CICA. What we do here is amazing, and technology is always and ever changing. So we continue to work hard, but even our students at this point have now become our teachers. First graders and kindergartners, I'll start with first. Our kindergarten students are working on writing as scientists, so their observation writing units, they're looking at how they notice the world around them, and they're recording their observations. So from the eyes of a five-year-old, you might want to ask them how they saw, or what they saw in their writing today. First graders are working on tricky words and bumps in their reading. They're very self-aware. They are able to use strategies to preview a book, and then figure out how it is that they can get over those bumps in their reading. So I was in one of the first grade classrooms, and they were sharing with their partners the strategies that they used when they came upon a tricky word. So we're certainly advancing in those areas. Third graders getting ready for their trip to the Thomas Darling House. Lot of learning going on about the history and the connections to Woodbridge. And second graders are working in math with odd and even numbers, and using mathematical skills to prove odd and even. They're also using arrays as a strategy, and that's a foundation for multiplication. Our fourth grade students are working on their personal essays and writing, and that's not really that difficult for a fourth grader to talk about themselves. But to narrow it down to one aspect of what they want to write about becomes a little more tricky. Solid, they're also working on fact fluency. So a solid understanding of mathematical facts and computation is foundational skill for our students. Fifth graders, I was in there today, and they're just about ready to get into their book clubs. So they have formats for coming to consensus. So if you are a fifth grader with a very strong opinion, sometimes it's hard to listen to someone else's opinion. So they were working on citing evidence to help support their opinion, and this will lead them in the future in writing, when they're writing argument opinion essays. And they actually have to defend someone else's opinion after listening to it, take evidence for what someone else said. Sixth graders are deep into their character studies and Reader's Workshop, the transformation of a character throughout a novel. They also are working with, I saw today in one of the sixth grade math classes, comparing fractions and multiplication, division of fractions. Something that's a little tricky sometimes is fractions with unlike denominators, so we're working on that a little bit. Our MAG students have been very, very fortunate that the weather has cooperated. So our outdoor classroom has, the children have been able to be outside. Also, they are preparing for their very first entertainment show of the year. It's always an exciting day for the entertainment show. I want to end my update with, in the midst of safety and security, and S-Back, and CMT, and Common Core, and teacher evaluation, Beecher made a promise, made a promise not to lose the spirit of Beecher Road School. And over the last few weeks, nothing has been more evident than that spirit, and that we really do what we do very well. I've had two requests from different districts. A teacher from Amistad Academy had an opportunity from her school to come to a school that excels, kindergarten first grade, came to Beecher Road, saw two of our classrooms. An entire group of read specialists, teachers, and the school principal, Rowan Amity School in Dulford, they were here last week, I think there were nine or 10 of them, to see how Reader's Workshop is done and done well. They came to Beecher. So we need to, as we talk about tonight, I'll give you the update on teacher evaluation. You need to keep in mind that we want to keep the spirit of Beecher, and I think we've done a pretty good job of that. So we ask for your support on this minor change to our evaluation plan. As Dr. Stella mentioned, we have, with your support, opted to not take the CMT and go forward with the S-Back. What that means is that we will not have standardized data to be reported for this year. So we don't have standardized assessments to compare CMT to something else. So we have requested to use the assessments that we currently have, which for Language Arts are really used to drive instruction, so the data reporting is a little bit tricky, but we'll get through and figure it out, and change the language of CMT, or standardized assessment, to non-standardized assessment in our evaluation plan. In the teacher evaluation plan, 22.5% of a teacher's rating, this was originally intended to be based on a standardized assessment, in a grade that offered standardized assessment, so for three to six for Beecher. We have permission to not do that, and just to use the assessments that we have, and so the language change will read standardized to non-standardized, and that's the only change. So when that comes time, if there's any questions for me about that, certainly we'll answer them.
What's SLO?
A student learning objective, and our teachers will write two of those this year. Our classroom teachers will write one in mathematics and one in the Language Arts, based on some in-depth data analysis. Our content area teachers will write them based on their content standards.
Anybody?
Are we talking about these now, or are we talking about this later?
The teacher evaluation thing?
We can do it now, yeah.
I can give you just a little more information about the remaining pieces, that was the only change, but just to refresh your memory, our teachers will have a percentage, and so that 22.5%, one will be based on one SLO, the other 22.5% will be based on their second SLO. And again, they will not come from standardized assessments. Teachers are also writing a parent feedback goal this year, based on data from the parent feedback survey. There will also be a professional focus goal, where we as a district have picked the areas that we want to focus on, and teachers either as teams or individuals will write a goal aligning with the district goals there.
Yeah, I'm proud of our administrative staff and our teachers for the amount of work and time they put into this here. First of all, administrative staff, congratulations to, to our three administrators, Mrs. Haberkamp and Mrs. Prisco, Mrs. White. They had to go through an intense five-day training period, even with all their experience for this new transformational type of evaluation. And that training period was from early morning till late afternoon, quite intensive, and they ended by having to take a, a test, which they submitted and passed with flying colors, so. And our staff has been involved in professional development workshops since they hit the ground running here at the beginning of the year. And you're right, Mrs. Prisco, we've tried to tie in whatever the changes are into where we're going and how we're doing it, and what our belief system is, so. Mrs. Prisco and the other administrators have been meeting with the teachers over the past month, and again, with, one good thing is having conversations about teaching and learning, so we want to continue to focus on that.
So, so what happens, what happens next year when S-Back, we're in our second year of S-Back? Are we going to change this back?
We certainly, the part of the teacher evaluation plan, it can be revised every single year. That's what we've been instructed. And we will, we may have to stay non-standardized for two years, because we may not have, we don't have any idea what the reported data will look like for us. So we don't know what that is, so we're going to have to...
Yeah, we're in flux right now. I mean, the state is, that's just us, the state is in flux right now. So there's no standardized data. Yes, there will be, once, once they're able to get, get the district standardized data, yes, they'll, that'll be 22.5%. That, that's a given, because that's part of the legislation. But in a way, I always like to look for the silver lining. This will be a year when we can have grand conversations with teachers about teaching and learning, and use our assessments that are primarily designed to inform instruction and improve instruction, and really work on that during this year. So it's a little respite, you might say, from, there'll be no reporting for this year about how we're doing with other districts and so on throughout the state, but it'll give us a chance to really self-study and analyze, and really try to move, raise the bar, and based on our belief systems here.
Carl?
So one of the things we can measure is outcomes versus the expected results set forth with the various indicators we're using. Is that correct? We don't need to go outside to get a standard of measurement, we're creating it internally.
Yes.
But we're using existing assessments that we have, we're not creating, oh, I'm sorry.
But if I understand the value of those assessments, we're measuring progress before the youngsters get to the test. So we, we're predicting what those outcomes ought to be, so we can measure the outcomes against those predictors and see how they're working for us.
Predicting against a standard of S-Back?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm following. I just want to make sure we're not nodding yes.
What happens is, um...
I was gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just not sure, I...
To explain it a slightly different way, and look for commonality with it, with the type of assessments we have informs instruction on a daily basis. So we're gearing more to looking at children's pathways. So yes, you could watch them from month to month, and you could see growth, or there could be a plateau and so on. And then at the end of the year, you could see how far the student has traveled during that year in, in reading and mathematics.
But if I understand the process properly, when they sit for the exam, we have an external measure of the status of each of the children. And along the way, we've been accumulating evidence of where we think that child ought to end up when taking the external exam. So that's a perfect indicator, initially of whether our own internal measurements are useful in evaluating the content of the curriculum before they sit for the exam.
I'm not sure we have any documentation of where we expect the kid to be before they take the exam. Maybe I'm missing something, but I don't...
We're measuring periodically, measuring results.
Yeah, this is not a standardized exam, though, like...
So here's the, so, so this will, well, I don't want to, Lisa, do you have a question before I ask?
Butterlever related, so I don't want to...
So, so I'll use an example that maybe, so just so I understand, this, I didn't really understand until I just had a teacher, parent, teacher conference, the letter scoring for reading, okay? So as I understand it now, which I didn't really understand until now, I assume that you gave an exam, and at the end of that exam, you said, okay, they are a P, they are an L, they are an O. But now I understand, the teacher has to predict what they think the kid is reading at, give them that test, and they either pass that letter, leather, letter or not. Which is interesting, because if you're going to be assessing people on the advancement of a child through the testing stage, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm giving you a worst-case scenario, I don't expect anyone to ever do this, but I'm saying, if I were figuring out a way to make my SLO, whatever, look good, I would say, okay, I'm going to give every kid the B test at the beginning of the year, they might all get there, but I'm starting with B, and then I get everyone to an L by the end of the year, and I look like I'm, you know, an amazing teacher. I'm, I'm just questioning how you prevent that from happening, other than just professionalism?
Professionalism, absolutely, but we do have the data that we've already...
From the previous year would be an example, so we have, you have an idea of starting by where they ended the year before.
We do have, we have actually, we have a few years of that.
You don't start a day every year.
Right, no, no, but you could just start the kid exactly where they were from the previous year.
Usually the kids...
The spring, spring would fall, from the spring where they ended to fall, they typically tend to, some of our first graders and even some of our second graders have a little regression, but they typically tend to be around the same, from where they ended the year to where they start the year. So if I was looking at professionalism aside, if I was looking at someone's SLO, and I knew their class, I have their data, and they started someone at a B, and looking for growth, we wouldn't approve that. So that's, I mean, that's fine.
But those first grade teachers can get away with that.
Okay, Lisa.
Oh, I'm trying to get some sense of what other districts that have opted for S-Back this year are doing about the teacher evaluations.
I can do a little bit. Some are looking for some Band-Aids, some quick fix, outside standardized assessments that they can give for a year, there's some out there. We have to not do that. So we, like what we use, and it's individualized, isn't perfect, it's not, but nothing ever is.
And we did discuss this when we talked about going from CMTs to S-Back. We talked about the fact that in doing that, we would not have comparable data, that we knew that that was, you know, the reality, and even going forward, we know we won't have comparable data as the S-Back changes, because they fix things that are wrong in the first year, and they get feedback and everything else. So we went into this, and we said at the same time, we don't want to create new artificial assessments for an interim period of time. We knew we had internal assessments, and, you know, we all agreed that we didn't want to come up with something artificial, and something that was only going to be, you know, necessary for an interim period of time. So that was, that was a prior discussion.
But what I'm saying is that we can make use of those internal measures now to look at the results, the, I forgot the acronym for the test, to see how, what that informs us. And if, if the outcome should be that, that we don't, with the results don't look anything like we thought they would look like, then there's two possibilities. One is that our internal measurements are flawed, or as I suspect is more likely the case, this external measure, which will then make it more useful for us in the following year to say, hey, wait a minute, this isn't terribly important. And I keep coming back to the, to the notion that we, over the years, have been able to describe a curriculum that produces an educated child. And they are confronted with a massive learning that produces favorable outcomes. And happily, in most cases, that has been validated by the results of the CMTs. We don't now know whether that will be validated, but that's not a reason not to use the first year results, to dismiss them as worthless, because we can then get an insight as to whether that, the outcomes as measured by that test are going to validate, continue to validate that what we're doing internally, and what we're measuring internally is valuable. Which I suspect that's the more likely outcome.
I would just argue with one little part of your premise, if I may. The idea that the curriculum was developed to produce a certain outcome of education, and that the test was testing that, I think that over the course of the last number of years that we've been using the CMTs, the curriculum gets adjusted every year based on the results of the CMT. So there is a circular, you know, I think that S-Back will be most interesting to see if an S-Back exam is what we want our children to know. I think it will be interesting, this is the first year, and we couldn't really base our teaching on the S-Back, right? I mean, so I think in some ways, granted, there'll be a learning curve to the test itself, so there will be some, but I mean, in some ways, you know, curriculum and exams go into a circular sort of snowball.
I'm, I'm going to perform like a top-notch sixth grader tonight, I hope, and call on an expert witness to defend my point of view. She's sitting right there.
The thing that's different now is that now there's the Common Core. So a school in and of itself isn't going to determine a curriculum the way it used to. So if all our teachers are cognizant of the Common Core State Standards, and are teaching to the Common Core State Standards, which are rigorous, then in fact, what we're teaching should play out in the, in the S-Back test. Hoping that the S-Back test is a valid and reliable test, which is, is, we're not quite sure of that yet, but definitely if you're teaching to the Common Core State Standards, that test should measure what's still learning.
But to Carl's point, the discussion tonight is that you're not able to include the S-Back scores as part of the teacher evaluation because of the timing, not because we don't think that, we're looking at those results.
We don't know when we'll get the results back.
It's just we can't use them for the evaluation this year.
And that's actually a change in the entire state. Everybody has to change their plans, because their, the data might come back in the fall. That's what they're saying now. So that's why everybody in the state had to rewrite their plan.
Right, right, you don't have it available.
Because there's nothing there, there won't be anything.
I just want to check in, Lisa, you got your question answered, okay. Did anybody else?
Yeah, well, just to kind of believe what Carl's saying too, I mean, I do think this year gives us a unique opportunity to kind of say, forget about the test scores for a while, and let's look at our internal evaluation system. I mean, we say all along that it's just one part of the picture, and we've got all these things, we can really look at them without having to worry about the other ones for this year.
Yeah, that's true, Carrie, and the fact is too, sometimes we forget, we, we just, just recently have gone from a two-school system to a one-school, and we're trying to develop, we're in the, we have the momentum to develop a cohesiveness going from K to six, pre-K to six. We could use this year as a, as a way of moving along, so it gives us a good excuse to focus on our internal things, so.
Okay. Do we want to go ahead with the motion then?
Thank you very much.
Move that we approve the language modifications in the 2013-14 educator evaluation plan as presented for submission to the Connecticut State Department of Education.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. All righty. So Dr. Stella, I think, are we done? You gave, well, the S-Back update, did you want to do something separate on that?
S-Back, we, there's not a lot we could say about it, it's computer-adjusted to each child that we know. It'll be given the last, sometime the last 12 weeks of the year, and districts will get their assignment soon, I'm not sure when, shouldn't say soon.
But we have been approved to do it this year, which is, aren't we not sure?
Well, we're sure the state's going to have some...
But here's, here's the thing, though, there's always a qualifier, because the Commissioner told us directly that he is absolutely confident that we will have the waiver approved from the federal government, but that hasn't come through yet. So we're just relying on the Commissioner's word on that. So if there's any change with that, we will, we will let you. But also, what else do we know? There are about 40,000 items in this S-Back, and it's just, just individual students. What else, Nancy, that you want to ask?
I was just going to say, there still will be a fifth grade CMT for science.
Oh, absolutely, I'm glad you mentioned that, yeah, yeah. Because there's no, there's no S-Back for science.
So did you say earlier that schools will take these at different times? Not the CMT where like, you open that piece of paper every day at the same second? So how does that work?
That's a very good question.
Every student will be at a different level.
Like, so can we know anybody who already took it?
No.
We can call them?
Well, they're adaptable, so they're, they're individual.
Right, right, I understand, but you know, more so...
The problem is, if I take, if I take, yeah, if one group takes it in February, and one takes it in April, that's...
Right, how is that the same?
Yeah, but there are tens of thousands of items, so think in terms of the way it's been described, it's almost as if every child is taking a different test, depending on where they are, and that's on their continuum. So you, you wouldn't be able to trade information on that, it's not, it's not a sum of tests.
It's not that, it's just that the development of a child, three months, three months worth of window, it's a long time.
Yeah, it just seems, seems odd compared to the CMT was so rigorous, and like, everybody opened the paper the second it aired.
Is it optional?
We're going to crash the engine, to be honest.
No, no. Where is, yeah.
Right, we should do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you...
We'll just crash the engine, and everybody be on at the same time. I wouldn't make more sense to do it longer, farther, to be slow here.
Well, and here we have resources for computers, whereas other schools are in worse shape than we are as far as...
Oh, we heard the tale of woe today from many districts as far as that goes, so we are in better shape. But again, we want to do it in a way, it's going to be an elaborate process, a time-consuming process as far as having the children take the test. CMT was also, but again, we're trying to keep our, our mission, our vision at, at the same time, and translate all these things into it, and hopefully use this as a way of raising the bar for our children. It's going to be a higher-order thinking type of test, that's what we're told, and it'll stretch, stretch the brains of our children, our brains too.
Dr. Stella, just, can I actually call everybody? Are the students aware that there's a change, and is there any anxiety about that amongst the students, or is it being approached in the same manner? Because we got a little excited about the change, and we're a little... Because we got a little excited about the change and we're a little anxious about the change. I'm wondering if that's trickling down.
I'll say there's a little anxiousness in the pilot last year.
Now that I've finished, you put the mic on, what did you guys get?
There's definitely anxiety in the pilot that the students took last year. It was a bit overwhelming for them, so what we're trying to do is to desensitize them a bit. It's going to be a big change. There's an incredible amount of language in the math. There's some of the screens for the reading had three scroll bars for kids to get through. So we want students to get an idea of what it's going to look like so that they won't be overwhelmed by just that process of seeing a math problem that can be a paragraph of writing with a couple of numbers in it. And that's at a third-grade level. So teachers are very, very cognizant of it and trying to work it in slowly so children understand that.
And how often do they get to practice test?
There's one practice... There's one practice online right now and that's all that's available. But to give that to students would be a bit overwhelming because some of what's... Especially for the math, some of what's being required, they haven't even seen yet in their education. So, I mean, you could actually put it up on a smartboard and have a discussion about it rather than have the students sit at each computer and try to puzzle it through. And that's a better idea, really, to talk it through with them and explain it.
You're aware of it, though, and addressing it?
Oh, very much so.
And I know last year, when Rick Wood, you know, discussed it, he said there was some difference in anxiety level and ease of access depending on whether it was an iPad or a desktop or the actual hardware that they were doing it on. So we're in a position to use what is the most comfortable for children regardless of what it turns out to be, whether it's an iPad or a...
I'd like to emphasize the fact our administrators and our teachers are very, very thoughtful about this process and very child-centered. And, you know, at today's presentation, Rick and the team were describing the pilot and how we went about it and the anxiety level on many of the children that took it on the regular computers and the difference with the other children who were in a relaxed setting. And Matt, you're right, our children pick up our attitude and, you know, towards things too, and there could be anxiety more on one child than the other two. So we're not trying to low-key it, we're trying to prepare for it. So we're trying to have that balance, you might say. But it's going to be a very rigorous kind of test. There's no two ways about it, very, very rigorous.
Okay, did you have anything else, Dr. Stella?
That's it?
That's it? Okay. Karen, Facilities?
We met on October 3rd. We got a status update on the grounds and facilities projects that have taken place over the summer. We will be receiving an update on the sustainability initiatives from Dr. Stevanger at our next One thing that we hope will happen is that Masaro Farm will have a table at the Halloween We received an update on the building project and the status of it, which we have discussed here. And we also discussed grounds projects from the Fussin' O'Neill report, which we felt should be included in our proposal for the upgrade. And there's two of them, I believe, that are going to be included in that proposal. They're listed on the minutes, the pathway from the parking lot to the north playground and erosion near the south playground. I'll let Dr. Stella address that if I've got that right.
Very good.
Are there any questions for Karen? Facilities? Okay. Building Committee, I think Dr. Stella actually already reviewed this a little bit. There is a public meeting scheduled on November 20th and everybody should try to be there for the meeting. It's a public meeting to answer questions. So there's going to be a presentation and they're doing, you know, like a nice presentation. They're taking pictures of like the nasty boilers and, you know, hopefully, you know, and, you know, like some of the things that are really problematic and putting together why is it necessary, what's involved? And, you know, Dr. Stella will be speaking. They're doing more like a video in parts, so it should be, you know, a good presentation that's going on and answer a lot of questions for people from the town who have questions. And I think that's the only status we have. There's no other dates assigned yet for referendum or for anything else. So I think the public meeting part of what will happen is, you know, how many questions are there? How much more additional information? Either in additional sessions or meetings, like what else needs to happen to make people feel like they have the information, you know, when we go to a voter or referendum? So. Any questions on the building? Okay.
Did we have...
On this? Yeah. Passed. Let's see. Policy. I actually was at policy this week and there's minutes and everything. We're continuing the review of the 5,000 series, which is where we are now, and we meet on the first Thursday of the month. And it has listed in the minutes the next policy set that will be reviewed. So again, at any point that anybody's interested in a particular policy, they're all online. You know, you can look and see what policies we're going to be looking at. If there's something that's, you know, of interest and you can't attend the meeting, you can always let one of the committee members know, you know, make sure your comments are heard.
It's my understanding it was the best policy committee since I've been on the board and it's because I wasn't there.
It was chaos. Without Matt, it was chaos. We didn't go over your...
I'm not going to suggest that she run the moor, I just like her. I just...
Yeah, yeah, okay. Finance, Steve, you're up.
Okay. So you saw most of what we had discussed earlier. We did that on the consent agenda, so the only real action item from the finance committee was the capital budget. Dr. Stella, do you want me to go through it or are you doing a slideshow or...
No, no, no.
No?
Okay.
All right. So just briefly, obviously, the largest item on the capital budget is, what I would say is the placeholder for the building upgrade. We're not additionally asking for another $13,500 million. That's the big project. So the other items that are in that are the grounds and landscaping. If you remember, we talked about the Fussin' O'Neill report, which was a laundry list of items that really needed to get done around the outside of the school. What we're asking for is $55,000 and we're doing this in a sort of a measured approach on an annual basis, trying to check off boxes on this project that needs to get accomplished on the outside. So that's projects related to that. The cafeteria upgrades to equipment in the cafeteria. And then on the asphalt and concrete replacement, you just want to mention that, Dr. Stella said?
Yeah, the town supported the school district by applying for a steep grant for paving and asphalting, but that's not... It's never a certainty. We had favorable signals from the State Department. The town has to go through the process again of reapplying in January with the hope that we'll get it the next cycle. The grants are being issued on a, you know, district, town-by-town basis, so there were some towns ahead of us. So this is built in because our job is to put on the runway what we need here and then the town to decide how to fund it. We definitely need paving in the north and the south. You could see, it's very hard to repair some of the potholes, so we have... We're anxiously awaiting this here and hope that the steep grant will come through so that we'll save the taxpayers money too.
Okay. Questions?
I was just going to move that we approve the 2014-15 capital budget, capital projects budget as presented by the finance committee for submission to the boards of selectmen of finance.
Okay. Okay, any discussions? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Steve?
No, it was a very quick finance meeting.
It was an excellent meeting. Very focused.
It's always got hand in hand, but...
Very, very focused. Very efficient.
Okay. Kate, Lisa, have you made it to a committee?
Well, I went to a Cabe workshop last week.
Oh, okay. That's good.
It was on Freedom of Information Act and issues, and then the much more interesting half was social media. And, you know, it was a very good overview of the pitfalls that school districts, you know, need to watch out for when they're dealing with things that students are doing online or the teachers are doing online and, you know, keeping in mind issues of First Amendment and the Fourth Amendment and state and federal anti-discrimination laws and everything else. And there was a real emphasis on, you know, the importance of having policies in place and just education, education, education. And, you know, there were just a lot of examples that really, you know, made you wonder what people are thinking. And, you know, a lot of it is at the upper grade levels, but, you know, but I found it to be very productive and, you know, very legally interesting.
Did they say much about like the sage level or was it more, you know...
I mean, I think issues of, you know, what happens when schools discipline kids, when schools need to take action with respect to speech that occurs online. I mean, that's something that certainly can come up and does come up, I'm sure, with kids at this level. I mean, they are on some of these social media sites and they are saying things. And, you know, it can raise cyberbullying issues, it can raise other things. And, you know, the general rule is that schools, you know, they're allowed to regulate the kid's speech that occurs outside school if there's... If it's reasonably foreseeable that the speech will reach campus and if it does or is reasonably likely to cause a substantial disruption at school. Anyway, that's certainly not something that doesn't apply to fifth and sixth graders who are out there doing this. The next Cabe workshop in November is on... It's a legal update on religion in schools and things like holiday displays and things like that. That's November 26.
Time. The time of this presentation.
And the Cabe Conference itself is the 16th? Yeah. The 15th to 16th. And I think Dr. Stella is going, I'm going, Chris Jaffe's going, Lisa, are you going? Is that it?
It's not too late to bite. Yeah.
Chris Jaffe is going.
If anyone else wants to come along and you're able to, don't hesitate.
15th to 16th. It's Friday. Okay. All right. Any questions for Lisa?
No. Okay. Aces, I think we missed our first meeting. I'm on for the next meeting and we'll just, you know, nobody's volunteered to go at these, so we'll just have to keep going one at a time. They're Thursdays at 12:15, I think, or 12 o'clock, so it's a very difficult time for a lot of people.
I believe it's the second Thursday of the service.
Oh, the second Thursday?
I think it's the second Thursday at 12.
All right, so if any second Thursday happens to work for somebody, let Marcia know. Otherwise, we'll just have to keep doing one at a time. Okay. Public comment, Marcia?
Wait a minute, I'm going to do this.
Yeah, I know. You're going to plant somebody.
I'm going to mail one.
Yeah.
Is it okay?
No. All right. Then we are going to go into executive session.
Make a motion, Beth? Will we go into executive session? Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, so we'll just give everybody a few minutes to put the cameras down and everybody take a seat before break and we'll go into executive session.